With. The deck chairs in place, I'll call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on September first, two thousand twenty-two to order. And I will. Provide my usual public service reminder that these meetings are of the Board of Selectmen and they are open to the public, however, are not town meetings. They are meetings of the Board of Selectmen to conduct business of the Board. And the public is welcome to make comment on an agenda item during the public comment period. Of which we now have two. Um, the first item of business is the approval of minutes. And I have not had a chance to review these, so I'd like to leave it open for. The next meeting if that works for everybody.
Sure, that's fine.
That's fine.
Great. Um, under correspondence. We have um, an email from, and I think I saw Cheryl, did I see you on the call? Yeah, Cheryl and Jack.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks for coming. Um. So we have an email from Cheryl Kinney. And it um, it. Covers some um, road issues, road questions she has about Upper Kent Hollow. Um. And a couple of signs down in the Kent Hollow area. Um. Would you like me to read the letter into the record, Cheryl?
Uh, my uh, email, we've been having a um, problems with sending uh, the attachments, I guess. I was working with Joyce and and she was very helpful. But part of my email was actually kind of cut off, so I summarized at the bottom that there was a few other issues as far as speed and and signs and stuff. Uh, you don't have to read the whole thing. And if unless everybody in the selectmen's group has been able to review it, I don't know how that works.
So it was um, put in our folder. I'm going to get rid of a mint that I haven't, I know.
Sorry about that. Um.
Yeah, it was put in our meeting folder um. For review, I know, I'm not sure. Um. If everyone has had a time, has had time to. Dig into it, and I don't know if Rick has had a chance to. Um.
I mean, I can quickly summarize it if that works or. Um, sure. Uh, the the area in question that for the first issue, I guess, is it's next to our neighbors thirty-one Upper Kent Hollow Road, the Acosta's. Um. Through the years, they've done their best to mitigate the road kind of eroding. Uh, on their hillside and have uh. Been putting stones, stone wall, logs, shrubs, whatever they could to kind of hold the hillside. Uh, from eroding any further, but over the years, and especially the last two to three years with the amount of construction vehicles that we have on our road. Uh, it's gotten worse and worse. Last fall, I contacted Rick because I, during my walk, uh, had seen some um. Two tire depression marks from a triaxle truck that were actually on to the stone wall part. And not the road, and they were basically um. Making the rocks slide off the hillside, so had the truck gone a little bit further, it would have been a bad issue. Uh, a cone, two cones brought up, they were placed in the area of question. Uh. They remain there for two or three weeks. We're not sure why they ended up in the homeowner's driveway after that, and they remained there until about. Six weeks ago. Uh, I brought this up to Rick again in July, that this is really an area of concern. Uh, we're not able to pass triaxle trucks on that corner without having to go really far over, and you don't know where the ground is stable and where it is not. Um, the homeowners put out their own cones. That created a problem because, as you know, when people see cones, they veer out further away as they can. So now it became basically a one-lane road. And then uh, when I contacted Rick, they, the owners removed their cones. And plow stakes uh, like standing straight tall, plow stakes replaced there. Um. I'm not sure what purpose they serve, but uh, when I did contact uh, Rick and the only conversation we basically had via email, he said that he had given the permission. He had given permission to the homeowners to work with their landscaper to rectify the issue. Um, we've reached out to Rick several times asking for a meeting to review this. I don't really feel that it's a issue that should be remedied by a homeowner. Or a landscaper. Um. Because the area is very unstable, it really kind of seems to us it needs some sort of an engineering mitigation. Um. One of the reasons why I sent some pictures of the uh, guardrails that are up on Kent Hollow. They're not exactly um, the silver ones, they're not exactly everybody thing that people want aesthetically, but uh, there needs to be some sort of barrier there. Because it's just a matter of time before someone's going to go over the edge. Um, I guess our frustration is that trying to reach out to Rick. Numerous times, we haven't gotten any response.
I was just looking to see if Rick is on the call. I don't think he is.
And going the fall, when this did come up, is when it was covered with leaves, is really kind of. Another big issue.
Because the area actually gets hidden, probably.
It gets hidden, people actually think it's road and it's not, it's uh, the homeowners have tried to do what they can to mitigate it, they actually filled it with uh, small gravelstone. Uh, I sent pictures of that as well. Um, but there's just large voids and the uh, it's not even road, it's just dirt and. And and it's eroding. And with that, as you can imagine, with the house that was built uh, down the road on Straits Road. Um, the sixteen thousand square foot uh, addition to the area. I can't even tell you how many cement trucks were on this road in a two to three week period of time. The road isn't even made for vehicles like that to pass a car. So when you have to go that far over, I think Jack and I measured it, you could barely get a sixteen feet mirror to mirror with a car and a truck. Um, so it it just would like it looked at.
Yeah, so I'll make sure um, tomorrow. Rick and I sit down, even if we have to take a ride out there. But we take a look at this and and really address what's going on.
Okay, we'd like the opportunity, we that we asked uh, Rick if we can meet with him to review it as well, so we we would like the opportunity to discuss it.
Okay.
Like on the. The downhill side or the side of the road where the stone wall issue is. There's a depression in the pavement. Like, you know, over the years from the vehicles passing over, it's like compacting and. Eroting or pushing down the hill a little, so.
Okay, yeah, it's hard to see, the pictures only came through in like a, almost like a thumbnail size. Um.
I tried to send a video, but it wouldn't, it was too big of a file.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I'll, I'll touch base with Rick tomorrow and we'll, we'll for sure be in touch. Um, if not tomorrow, then Tuesday.
Okay, and then um, the other is.
Signs.
The other issue I brought up with it, Rick, I didn't hear back from is on Straight Road. Uh, where that new house is, there we, from our recollection, there was a stop sign there at some point, and I'm not sure when or um. When it was removed or if it got hit. But there is no longer a stop sign there, and with the amount of vehicles coming out of Straits Road, even though there's only a small number of houses on. Um. Just that big house alone between the deliveries and ma- uh, excavation and masonry and staff, um, they don't realize that they have to stop. So we've come close to uh, going into the corner and having trucks just run right through.
Yeah, it is a funny intersection when. If you don't know that you have to stop there.
Right.
Makes. And again, I'm not the road person, but it makes sense that there wouldn't have to be a stop sign at the end of the road.
Right.
The world, that should be an easy quick fix, and there's a uh, the road sign for Upper Kent Hollow. And Anderson, so that like two.
Hmm. That just went missing. I don't, we're not. We're not sure where that went, but.
Wasn't recent, I feel like I was down there on a. Call like a month ago, and I thought I remember seeing them.
Yeah, it was just in the past two weeks.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh.
Those are, those are certainly easy.
Right, remedies. And then the the last uh, the last and and I guess ongoing issue is the speed, and I know that that's like a. A heavy word in town because everybody has issues with speed on their road, but we've, we've had it for years, we're a cut through to New Milford. Um, we were avid walkers, were. Avid dog walkers, we're avid, you know, we walk to the lake, we walk around uh, our block six miles. Picking up garbage, we try to do what we can to keep our neighborhood um. Clean and safe. But um, there are many times that we've had to literally jump into the weeds to avoid being hit. Um, several years ago, when we brought this up, a, the town had newly uh, purchased speed signs that. Uh, showed your speed as you went by.
Hmm.
Um, I had reached out to Trooper Fisher uh, several times, he's always uh, very um, makes himself available to speak with. He wasn't able to come up and do speed in uh, traps in our driveway, which I offered, even if it was like in the morning one day or in the afternoon another day to be a deterrent. He doesn't, he just has too many roads to monitor. So they had put that speed sign outside the front of our house, was there for several months. And we were fine with it, but then when it was picked up and taken away, we didn't hear any um, feedback, and then when we called to inquire about feedback. We were told that because they were new, uh, there with, there was no uh, certainty as to how, or there was very, it was very uncertain on how to retrieve the information if it recorded anything. Which was very disheartening because it was out there for weeks and weeks and weeks.
Yeah, so it it would have been collecting data for sure, um, and we have all the data um. From every sign here. In the office, I just need to go and find it, but we have two signs on order and they're the newer ones, and as long as there's, we can find a reliable. Um. Cell signal, we can um, we'll be putting one of the new signs down on Upper Kent Hollow Road for a a time. So that we can collect the data and and look at it. Um. If if we have to do one of the, the older signs, you have to actually go there with a computer and pull the data, and it's much more cumbersome, so it would. We'd prefer to have the kind that we can actually pull up a dashboard and see the live data. Um. But that is definitely on the list for the new signs and obviously making sure that there's a signal down there.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and um.
There is no cell service down here, really.
Yeah.
It's like one bar.
We get one.
Right, there's one bar between like your house and I think Ken Cooper's house.
We're hoping the new power will help us out, but.
Yeah.
Um.
So we may have to put one of the old ones up there, but regardless, we will, you guys are in the hopper to receive uh, one of those signs.
So then I guess after it collects data, let's say it it, I mean, you know, it says that the, at the speed is thirty miles per hour and the average car is going forty-five. We've been upwards of fifty-five and more. Um. What happens then? Like, I, one of the, one of the attachments I included was, uh, I don't know if it was Beacon Falls or Plymouth, has put out seasonal speed bumps. Um. Not to, not to uh. Fix the problem, but just to offer remedies because Trooper Fisher said there's no way he can monitor all the roads in town. You know, what would, what would then be the process after that data is collected?
So collecting the data is definitely, um, that will give us a picture of how fast cars are going, um, when the traffic is peaking, so on, um. I think it was Bridge Street. We were thinking that the, the traffic would be peaking around um, the school drop-off time in the morning. And when we pulled the data, it actually showed that it was much earlier, and it was really the early commuters that were. Um, there was a big peak, and then it would fall off and then a little peak during the school, um, the school drop-off time, but that was when the, there were the most people. Um. Going the fastest, so it can tell us things like that, that, you know, anecdotally, you can't really gather that, and then it will also give, um. Because Andrew is. Only one person. Um, it'll start to show us trends of when there's more traffic in the area, and then he can target his speed enforcement for those times when he's, there's likely to be more um, speeding cars and he's. More likely to stop people and ticket them. So it does give us good.
What it, just as long as, I mean, I, like, you know, if everybody's time seems to be around the same, like you said, he's only one person, I just would like to see something um. Forward thinking on how we can best. Try to mitigate this because it's been going on for years and it it just doesn't seem to be, people don't police themselves on on speeding through neighborhoods and um. It's just, you can't even pull out of your driveway, you're worried about your family coming to visit you. It, there's cars that reach some pretty impressive speeds on this road.
Yeah, so um, I've asked about the temporary speed humps because we have them on um. Kenmont Road, that they are, um, they go out during the, the camp season basically, and then they're pulled. So that the plows can get through, that's a very low um, low-speed road, it's always obviously. Very few, very few cars, very low speed. Um, I don't know if, if from a safety standpoint, because if you have somebody going. You know, forty-five, fifty miles an hour, coming barreling through and they hit a speed hump. Um, not knowing, you know, regardless of signage, because we know people can desensitize to signage. Um. Is that? Is that? Risk appropriate for us to take? Um. Trying to slow down the traffic, so those sort of, those traffic calming measures can definitely have um, sort of two sides to them. And I would, I would defer to Rick on this. Um. But we can certainly look at it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it just uh. I don't know, three or four weeks ago, even when we were walking the block, we were walking by Kent Falls Brewery, uh. We heard a big bang behind us, literally to turn and see car parts flying at us. Within feet. And it was a gentleman in a uh, Volvo with an out-of-town plate and three children that. We think overcorrected to avoid hitting us and uh, hit the pole. Um. We were very fortunate, but I can't even tell you the, the sound of that being feet behind you. Um. There's just, there's no, there's no uh. Policing of the people's own speed and people aren't familiar moving here from out of town.
All right, yeah, so we'll follow up with Rick. Um, look into the different calming, you know, traffic calming measures. I know there's some sort of more creative. Things that are happening out there um, in the last couple of years, but we can certainly look at different options.
Okay.
And once we start getting that data, um. You'll, you, you know, you'll start to see Andrew out there at certain times of day. We also have been um. I've been meeting with the other two first selectmen from Washington and Warren, and I think I've mentioned this a couple of meetings ago. Mostly it was about lake speeding, um, and we're talking about um. Possibly sharing resources, so if they have, um. You know, if. Being able to share, um, Warren doesn't have a resident state trooper, but um, possibly being able to share out some resources um. To get a little bit more um, coverage of speed enforcement in those areas that are. Um, kind of like Kent Hollow um, and surrounding that Lake Warmog area, so we're trying to come up with some. Creative solutions to get more speed enforcement in the area, aside from paying. You know, a second state trooper, a, you know, overtime rate. Um.
Hmm.
But that, you know, that's definitely another option that we may have to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. And I didn't mean to. Monopolize the conversation, Glenn Rufus. Um. If you wanted to jump in.
I mean, just to say, there's a, a couple of uh, you know, some serious issues here, I think, on this, on this roadway, um, and I think, uh, you know, there's a lot going on with streetscape and all this, but I think uh. Gene, Rick, maybe uh, you know, maybe you should go up there and just check it out, take some pictures, take some video and and see what this roadway looks like, so we can. We can address it because clearly this has been going on for some time, so um.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Comment really, Gene is that um. I kind of disagree with your. Thought that. Speed bumps might be a risk, I, you know, people want to speed on the back roads, they're taking the risk. Um.
It's a thirty mile an hour road, so it's not.
So once, once they start doing that. And they're texting or whatever, who knows, they've never been on the road before. That, that they're taking the brunt of negligence. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't. Put that up as a deterrent to looking at speed bumps possibly. And like you said, there are a lot of new creative ways of. Of doing it, maybe we could buy an old police car. Partially fill the uh, dips on the side of the road with it. Slow them down.
We, we have seen things on social media where if you sit at your, at the end of your driveway with a hairdryer, it has a tendency to slow people down.
I think it's radar.
Um, the only other suggestion that we had, uh, would have is that when they did put the speed sign out, uh, that was collecting speeds, it was here for so long. That after, it really, it desensitizes, as you said, after two weeks, people are just. It 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 doesn't uh. It it doesn't uh, it, it, for the first week, they all slow down, and then it's like two to three weeks, they speed back up, so just to kind of encompass that when they, when they do put them out.
Yeah, I've found. The location, um. That desensitization is, varies with location, it's very. It's been interesting.
Hmm.
Between the one on Elizabeth Street, there's one down that, um, out on Macedonia Brook Road, the one on. Um, coming into town on Route seven, and then the coming, the one coming into town, um. The southbound and northbound, they all have slightly different um, trends, and it's just interesting, so I'll, I'll look to share some of that data at the next um. Meeting if I can get it all. Scrubbed in and in a consumable format, but yeah, we'll look to get um, a sign placed down on Upper Kent Hollow soon.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
As a resident of Kent Hollow, may I speak?
Certainly.
Please don't put any speed bumps there. Um, I drive that road every day. And with my truck, speed bumps would just be a hazard to my back. Um. I was driving down through there the other day and Cheryl um. Waved for me to slow down. I stopped and let her know that I was going the speed limit, and sometimes. With a bigger vehicle, people really think you're going faster than you're supposed to be, but you're not. Um, no offense, Cheryl, and I just had to say this, but. If it, if it comes down to speed bumps, that's just not acceptable on a, I did. Uh, it's a, it's not, it's not a school zone, it's not a, you know, if people walk the road, I understand. And I've seen Jack and Cheryl walking the road, but. Um, people aren't always going as fast as some pedestrians think they are.
So let's, that'll, that's going to kick off our um, next. Item on the agenda of public comment on the agenda items, and I'm gonna scan the room. For hands up if you, um. Don't have video, if you want to just. Shout out that you'd like to make a comment. By all means.
Just in response to to Mike's comment, um, I I can appreciate large equipment not wanting to drive over the speed bumps. Uh, but we've lived here for twenty-two years, and this is a progressing issue. Uh, I appreciated him stopping the other day and and mentioning that he was only going thirty, but he was also pulling in a. Large equipment trailer and maybe. While it's suggested that you do thirty, when you have large equipment and you can't stay on one side of the road because it's so narrow, uh, you should be going less than thirty.
Well, I may as well keep my truck on one side of the road.
I don't want to get in the weeds on this topic, I'd like to. Give other people, if they have.
Correct.
Any public comment, um, the opportunity. We don't see. Any hands raised right now. So we'll keep moving. Um. Number five, under tax refunds, we have one tax refund that was a leftover from. The last meeting, so I'll make a motion to approve one tax refund for uh, sixty dollars.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
All right.
Bye. Uh, new business six point one, accept and possibly act on the recommendation from the streetscape committee, and I'm gonna um. Pull. Mike on to the spotlight. So we can, um, Mike, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Okay, so I submitted a letter last night, I'm sorry to for, to everybody for not submitting it sooner, um, just been very busy. Um, the first part of this letter um. Is a recommendation, and the rest of it are observations that have been made. By our committee and um, others in town. Throughout the beginning of the uh. Sidewalk installation. Um, the recommendation that we've come up with, um. The reason for it is because the state mandate is to. Um, place granite. Curving on compacted soil. And not cradled with concrete as we thought it was originally planted, which I think in the original plan it did show that. Um, but my understanding is that the state will make an exception if a town has adopted their own streetscape. Specifications and regulations. Um. So our recommendation to you is to create streetscape plans and specs for future sidewalks, or even maybe before phase two comes along. And in those specs. And plans, we recommend that the wording should include. Granite curving shall be cradled in concrete because then there's no question whether it's on solid ground or not. Um. The current granite, uh, they do put concrete under each end, they notch the ends, and that's what supports them. Um, but. There, there are many places where. The rest of the granite is not supported by compacted soil. Although there's compact, they do compact it before they set the granite down. They lift them and then put loose soil under them and tap them down to the elevation they need. And then they dig under each end where they notch them, and then they pour concrete blobs, which is the state mandate. Um, to support the ends. Our issue there is that there's still nothing supporting the centers as far as the compacted soil goes. So. That would be our recommendation, and we hope the town will uh, adopt some sort of streetscape plans and specs. And put this as part of it, I think um, it would be to the advantage of the town to do that. And um. Therefore, you know, that way. Maybe even for phase two, it can be done that way, which. We believe is a stronger way, and we believe that there's no question whether or not. The whole granite curving will be on something solid. So that's, that's our recommendation. So if you want to talk about that first, or do you want me to go through our observations before that?
Um, why don't we talk about that recommendation? A little bit. First, before we move on. So I. You know, in. Talking with um. SLR and talking with the DOT. Um. It's, you know, it's difficult to. I guess I would want to understand. How this would be an improvement of above and beyond the state specification. And even, like, I went back and looked at, there was, um, I think Jack had mentioned that Brookfield wrote their own. Specification for their streetscape project. Um, but they actually use the state spec of the. Um. What is in the, the current state spec with the blobs in their um, in their plans, and they didn't. They didn't do the cradled in concrete, they did go with the recommended, or not the recommended, but the state specification. So I guess I, I'm not ready to really. Make a decision.
Okay, may, may I show you a picture I took of a, of a piece of granite that was placed yesterday? Kind of, or tried to. See that? That is one of the new pieces on the north side of Bridge Street. That is compacted soil underneath there. But there's a good inch of. Nothing holding the center, the whole center of that piece of granite up. That's our concern. And that, and we observe that in more than one place, and um, as it says later in the. In this letter, um. The town tends to drive a fifteen-ton loader on top of that. Those sidewalks to clear them of snow in the winter. We're just, we just think that it gives. Gives the opportunity to crack the granite, especially since it's. Fifteen to seventeen inches and more often fifteen than eighteen as the original spec showed. So I just wanted to show. So I just wanted to show you that and and that's the main part of our reasoning for the cradling.
And I know Mike Doherty from SLR is on the call. Mike, if you could just speak to the that space. Underneath. The curving.
Sure, can you hear me?
Their concerns, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the that that gap at the bottom of the curb should should not be occurring. It should be bearing on compacted process aggregate base. So. If Mike, if you had specific locations, if you want to send me those, otherwise. We're gonna have to do a better job, I guess, checking and making sure they are. I was on site today. And the new curving that I was watching get put down was on. Stone. So but it 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 definitely should not be having a gap at the bottom.
Okay. I do have several pictures. I I can, I don't have pinpointed this one, I think was the third one coming up from Elizabeth Street toward the cemetery. On the north side.
Okay, I mean, I'll I'll alert them that they're gonna have to check all the curb. But yeah, that that definitely shouldn't be occurring.
Okay, and we do have other pictures of them and I think I can pinpoint most of them for you. But that's that's been that's been the concern all along. My time, I know they're. They're doing this according to the state, you know, with the without the concrete cradle. I understand that. And our committee understands that, but it's just that gap in the middle that concerns us the most. We there's, we're not questioning whether they compacted it underneath, but it's just that gap. So.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Shall I go on to the observations or do you wish to talk more about that?
Just to not close the loop, but for the moment, just understand where the other board members. Are on the recommendation.
Question on the original specs of what phase one, it did not say granite curving shall be cradled in concrete or it did. So this is something that's new. This is new wording.
I believe, Mike, if you if you want to speak in, I believe the original plans did show it cradled.
Well, not not really cradle, Mike. It was it was front and back. Okay. Of the curb, so. The original design still had it placed on process aggregate base.
Right. I I I think that. Even if it weren't cradled, I think that if it were poured like you, and I know the state asked you not to do that. I think that if it were poured and placed, they could have at least put some concrete under it in those areas and it wouldn't have been. An issue, so so much of an issue, I guess, so.
Yeah, we have, we have been putting cur concrete to the backside of them. Not not always the full length, but. Yeah.
Okay.
That was my next question. So so what I got from the last meeting was that Connecticut DOT doesn't. Prefers not to have concrete on the roadside underneath that concrete because. Because that can get in the way of your, okay. But but Connecticut DOT doesn't have a problem if it's on the. The sidewalk side underneath those concrete curves.
They haven't expressed.
They haven't.
An issue with that.
So that's 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 kind of a halfway measure. I suppose. I mean, a cradle is the whole the whole thing, but. It's possible. To do part of it.
Yeah, I mean, the on the backside. Once we. Learned that we had to get rid of the concrete on the front side and create the full. Nine inches of asphalt repair, we left. The concrete at the backside of the of the curb. At least in the detail, the the state wasn't. They didn't definitively say do not do that on the backside, but. They weren't exactly thrilled because. In their eyes, if they have to run a. Utility or something, they just don't want to run into.
Yeah.
Nonstandard in their terms. You know, work item. So if their contractor comes out, they're expecting just process aggregate base.
I see.
And again, we have to keep in mind that this is. You know, this is not, we're doing a project on someone else's property. So we have to follow their. Specifications.
But at the very least, if there is, if 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 this. Correct compaction underneath the entire length of that granite curving, even in the middle. My God, well, that that would be, that would be fine with you.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I think I think we as a group just need to decide that who's ever doing the inspections because we. We did decide that we do have an inspector out there. We have to make sure that this is happening. And if this is happening and we're all communicating, then. This is a good thing.
Right, and so right the, there's a inspector from SLR and then there's also the inspector from the DOT.
There are two inspectors, okay.
And the. Yeah.
Okay. So this is something I I hope that the board is looking will consider at least for future work. It it simply eliminates this question because the. If you do cradle it, the granite would be held up on each end by a brick or. You know, or something of the sort, the concrete would then flow under it onto. Between the granite curvy and the compacted soil and then there's never a question. Okay.
Thank you.
Now we go to the observations.
Yes.
Now, there are several. Do you want to discuss each as we go or do you want me to just? Go through it?
I guess it's sort of.
I think we should kind of talk about it.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. Number one, the granite curb on the south side of Bridge Street at the intersection of Elizabeth Street was constructed with straight pieces of curb as opposed to. Radius sections or curb sections. The only communication communication we could find concerning this curb grant is as follows. According to addendum number two dated two twenty three twenty two, the answer to the question of the curve. The response was, we do not have a specific granite supplier. These details have been installed on previous projects successfully. Field fabrication of desired radii, chambers and buzzed edges may be acceptable. If field modifications are suggested, a mockup or mockups depicting the workmanship. Will be required for approval prior to any ordering of materials according to the change work order. Number one, the curb granite was included in the approval. I have a picture of that I'd like to show you because there are actually two issues. The two concerns that we have with that corner. As you can see. They did the curve with straight pieces. Okay, that's number one and we expected curved pieces. And also the other concern is along the stone wall. There should be expansion joint with a cap on it that they peel off and put self leveling caulk. To separate the concrete from the the stone wall. If that were my stone wall, I would not be happy with the concrete that's splattered all over. The wall either, but that's. Someone else's issue, not mine. Mine are the expansion joint and the non curved granite curving. Just to let you know what we were kind of expecting. Is this. Bar, you know, of course, this is at the Kent the Kent Barnes. They have the curb granite, which is very nice, very even. It's not concrete, but that's their property. They can do whatever they want. But this is what we were expecting. And this is what we got.
So that's all being torn out and it's going to be corrected.
Not according to Jeff, not according to Jeff Keith, it's not.
Mike, isn't that what we talked about today? Mike Doherty.
Yep. Yeah, the corner, both corners of Elizabeth Street ramps are being torn out.
Okay, I spoke with Jeff Keith yesterday at about this time and he said there's no way that that was gonna happen, so I hope it does.
Well, there's a chain of command and Jeff is in the chain of command and they just not have reached him yet.
I I thank you very much for that. I just. Wanted to let you know that I did talk to him about it and that was his response, so. That's that's very good. Thank you very much for that and I look forward to seeing that change. So I guess that takes care of that one. The sidewalk in front of Morning Star was okay, that I already went over this one too, so. That's the expansion joint along the stone wall. Is that part of the repair too, Mike, or?
Yep.
I would have, I would assume they have to take all the concrete up to replace that curving anyways, correct?
Yeah, no, the joint was one of the issues on there.
Okay. Okay. We're making progress. Thank you. The curing compound. One of our committee members. Watch them. If you want to call it applying the curing compound, it's our understanding that two even coats were supposed to be applied to the sidewalks. He watched them and I have pictures. On my phone of. It's spotted. If you walk down the sidewalk, it's just spots. And their sprayer must be plugged or something because they are not at all. Anywhere spraying an even coat of the curing compound on the sidewalks. Mike, I don't know if you noticed all the white spots going down Bridge Street. But that to me is a big, is a pretty large concern. Because. Jack watched them one day and a couple of days ago and. They're definitely not putting an uneven coat there, which I'm hoping. Would be rectified sooner than later because that curing compound slows it down. Am I correct, Mike?
I haven't had a chance to dig into the product that they're using, but we certainly will. I don't know. The language that you quote. Is that taken from the project manual? The two applied.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find where where we saw that. It said that there were supposed to somewhere, there was supposed to be two coats of curing compound on it.
Okay, just I'll dig in, I'll I'll take a look and just. I haven't had a chance to go through each of these, so.
Okay.
We'll uh we'll definitely look into it.
No, I I know we read it in in a couple of places. I just don't have it in front of me where we read it. But it it did say two layers of curing compound, two even layers. Whether it was, yeah, okay, so. That's, I think that's a huge issue, especially with the heat out there. I don't know. What kind of retarder they're using, if any, if they're just using elasticizer or. Or what they have in it, but the curing compound helps to keep some of the moisture in even than the heat.
Yep.
And I think that's very important that we do as a committee. Okay.
Okay.
Today, our committee has noticed that the process aggregate has been placed in excess of four to six inches. Maximum lifts required by section eight thirteen of the state code eight thirteen point oh three. The moisture content required for proper compaction of the process aggregate is inconsistent with the DOT requirements. The base shall be wetted and rolled or tamped after spreading each layer. Construction message zero nine two one zero zero A. All process material should be compacted. At near optimum moisture content. We've observed only the only moisture being provided is from nature and very little of that at best. I haven't seen them plug into any hydrant or anything to put some moisture in this and. And I do, I'm compacting areas for driveway for. For. Concrete slabs in a driveway and. And we put water down when we compact it because powder doesn't pack. I know that you have said that you've done some testing and they've come out okay. I'm quite surprised that it is, but. This is just a state statute that we have observed as not being. Applied.
Okay, again, I'm gonna have to look at Form eight eighteen. I mean, I'm familiar with. Zero nine two one, that's concrete sidewalks and ramps spec. I, again, I don't have in front of me, but I don't recall. The wedding requirement, but I'll I'll dig into it and we can issue a response.
Okay. Okay, the next one. We didn't see anything in the change order that approved the North Carolina granite, relieving them of the following specs. The top being thermal break or a thermal top instead of a sawn top. The back, the back top five inches being clean cut. In section M twelve oh six, stone curving, the materials for this workshop conform with the following requirements. On the back of the surface of the curved stone, there shall be no projection for three inches down from the side of the plane. Having a batter of four inches and twelve inches from the back. The front face shall be at right angles to the plane of the top. And shall be smooth quarry split free of drill holes. In the exposed face, there shall be no projections greater than three quarters of an inch or depressions greater than a half an inch. From the vertical plane of the face through the top. I'm sorry, there must be a Harris line. I'm sorry, must be a typo there. For a distance of eight inches from the top. For the remaining distance, there should be no projections or depressions greater than one inch measured in the same manner. We have observed. That. This has none, none of this has been done to the granite and we're just curious if the. The change work order accepting the North Carolina granite relief. Mather Corporation of that obligation to supply it that way.
So I I'm not gonna, I can't speak exactly to the projections and the. And the state spec, again, I'm gonna have to review that. The. I I if if the. Change order documents. I thought they had the shop drawing, drawing of the curb that NC Granite supplies. Which shows. The sawn top and and some of the other. You know, pieces of their of their stone, the sawn back and front or the split back and front. So they do not. And I don't know if they don't do it ever, but they really don't do any. I guess finish work on the stone. It's they split it, they saw. And from what I can tell, that's as far as they really go. So in in the, at least in the top, the thermal top. That was not an option that they would even supply.
That's that just, you can do with a torch, you can. Thermalize the top in in about three seconds per foot. We're just curious. Just because it came from North Carolina. And the three suppliers that were mentioned by Mather Corp would not supply, could not supply the granite. We're just curious. If and why this would relieve them of the obligation to 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 do that cutting and to do that thermal thing and. And I know you your change allowed for the just the quarter inch. Radius at the top instead of the the, you know, the more rounder radius. But where does it say that that they are not obligated to provide? What they were supposed to have bid on?
Well, in terms of them presenting this option, it didn't necessarily have all those finer details. And Mather. As far as I know, wouldn't have taken on any. Work to the stone curving itself. I I don't know. If that answers the question, but.
No, it doesn't. They did the job and even on page four, on our October or our August twelfth meeting, I was handed. What is the addendum to page four and the granite, the straight curve granite stone? It it shows the. Top being a thermal cut, it shows the back five inches being clean and straight. It shows the the vehicle side split. And these were, these were in the drawings that they bid on.
So I guess, I mean, I guess really what it comes down to is is and as far as I know is they offered. The NC Granite product as an alternative because the other suppliers wouldn't supply it. It's been was presented to the town. And and the town made a decision on it. It's been, was presented to the town and, and the town made a decision on it.
The town.
So it's always a product, it's not, Mather didn't take on, you know, reworking the stone itself.
Okay, so that, that means that the town basically relieved them of the obligation to supply what's in the plans.
When the acceptance of that product from NC Granite was given, yes, as far as, as far as I understand it.
Okay, um, which leads me to the question of. You know, I've asked this before, um, this was definitely not brought to the attention of our committee and we never would have. Recommended accepting that. Cause we do have issues with the, with the granite on the concrete side, as everyone knows, being con- uh. Convex and concaved and even with the six mil poly, um, not allowing it to. Attach, it still allows it to move and adhere to the granite, so. Did the board selectmen vote on this or we, and, and say yes to this product?
I can't remember if we made a motion, we, there was a discussion, um, I'd have to go back and look at the minutes. But we did talk about that, there was no, the normal vendor, the normal places where, um. Mather gets their granite from, none of them were available, so they had sourced this NC granite. And there was a, there was gonna be an additional because, so a change order because of the additional cost for the transportation. Um, and the details. Were having to change because this NC granite does not do the same type of, um. Details that the other places do, but we didn't get into the details on, um. On whether it was a split or sawn and the flame edge changed. Because SLR reviewed that and felt that it was prudent to, to move the project along and that it was acceptable.
So, um. In our mind as a committee. I believe the number was sixty seven thousand dollars extra. So we paid sixty seven thousand dollars extra for a product that's not as. Doesn't seem to be as good of a quality as was in the plans.
I, I wouldn't say that it, it isn't the, I wouldn't say that it's not the same quality. Right, it's, there were changes to the detail, but a lot of that cost was in the, the transportation because it's coming from. You know, however many hundreds of miles away. And so I guess the question is, what's the expectation, Mike? Do you want us to fire Mather and rip out all of the granite?
I'm just trying to, to, it's a concern and I'm just wondering. Um, if, if Mike SLR, um. Might have a way to help relieve this concern as far as the. Because the, the concrete will adhere to, it won't stick to it, but it would, it will. It, it is going to adhere to the granite because of the, the, um. The concave parts and the convex parts. Um, I have an idea, but I think that uh, it's not my place to design it. So my question to Mike is, do you, what would you think would help cure that?
So I mean, we have been directing the sub who's doing the install of the granite curb to cut projections. Um, along the backside of the, of the pores, um, to relieve some of those potential points.
I did notice, I did, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
I, I did notice, um, at the connection joints, they have taken the time, which is a positive to. To um, feather each piece that might be wider than the other to, to help make them the same width at the connections. Um, to their, to their credit, I, I think that's helping. But, um, but I, I don't believe that is going to help with, with it where it's convex. Or concave and the concrete will flow inward into the granite curving.
Okay, yeah, the concave is, uh, yeah, we can't solve that really with any cutting, um. To be honest, I haven't seen any sections that are concave beyond. Um, a point where I think it's a, it's a danger to the sidewalk that, to, to have it crack or have it adhere.
Right, you are inspecting all the granite as it's been coming in and I was there. I think two of the days where you were marking reject, a bunch of the, the curbing was getting rejected.
Cause I mean, we're trying to keep, keep the project moving, but keep the product qualities. And, and that's what we've been trying to do the whole time. Um, I'm sure there's some pieces that other people may not like. And if that's the case, you know, someone can point it out, but I, I'm. I'm not concerned, uh, that the, the sidewalk is gonna be damaged by the curving. At some point, you know, obviously concrete cracks, there will be some cracks. Um, but I, I think everything's getting locked in pretty well that we're not gonna have. Uh, differential sediment or, or substantial heaving that it's gonna allow those concave or convex sections to, to wreak havoc.
What would your tolerances be?
Well, typically it is within that state spec, um, language that you had read before. I, and I can't remember if that half inch to an inch, um. I can't remember if it's a projection or a con- concave, um, but that's what we're, we're typically using. We take a straight edge, put it against the curb. Um, and, and look at what's either going in or out, um, along that edge.
Okay, um, we did see several that, there's concrete and poured in place now, um, but. We did see several that I, that we thought were, were quite deep, um, and concerning to me, um. And I'm sure you, you're not there to check every single piece, I get it, and nobody, nobody has that kind of time, um. My thing is trying to come up with a solution to, to ease that tension on the curving and the concrete and. If I, I do have a small suggestion, but you know, my issue is I don't think the town should pay for it. I think that, uh. It should have been part of the, it what, you know, the smooth, the smooth section of that grant was part of the plan and. I think it should be Mather Corp's responsibility, um. Uh, maybe dou- a double blade on a, on a demo saw, cutting, you know, snapping a line and cutting that straight edge. Um, that would help straighten it out to ease on the aesthetics part. And you could slip a piece of, um, maybe sill seal down in and then. Put some self leveling caulk just as you would on a construction per, you know, expansion joint. I don't know if that would work, um, uh, to me, it would create a smooth surface. Um, the void would be filled on the granite by the concrete that you would be cutting and. Um, the, you know, the thickness of the sill seal would help as a little bit of an expansion and. Ceiling of the top of it would, I believe, you know, do the same as ceiling the top of where there are expansion joints in place. Just to, this is just a suggestion, I don't, you know, um. I don't think the town should do it if we have to pay for it, but I do think that. It should have been, you know, like, it was an obligation to, to have what is on the plans, that's all. I guess that's a no.
Coming, I, uh, you know, I'm, I am not a construction person at all, but. Being out at the sidewalks a lot, um. I don't know if you could just snap a straight line, I mean, the, it. It follows that center line and the center line is not straight, it's not straight along Bridge Street certainly.
Well, I, yeah, I, I don't mean snapping, I, I shouldn't have said snap a straight line, but you can, you can follow, um, maybe the narrower. Granite and, and do the cut and, and cut into the concrete on the narrower granite and then cut into the wider granite. To even it out. And you would be cutting that edge off the wider granite at the same time as cutting this group. Again, this is.
I mean, I could.
It's a suggestion, I'm just trying to.
Discuss it.
Yeah.
In our, uh, construction weekly construction meeting, I think it does, we've done, um. Details like that where you're not really going back and cutting it beforehand, doing an expansion joint that has got the self leveling caulk on top. And honestly, a year or two later, typically the caulk has shrunk and, and it doesn't necessarily look the greatest. Um, but, you know, we could look into it.
Okay, um, you know, this would be a very narrow, um. This would be a very narrow caulk thing, it would only be maybe a quarter inch, which. Um, wouldn't shrink as much as the half inch or five eighths would for the, for the expansion joint, but, um. I, if you consider it, thank you, that's all I can ask. Okay, moving on. Again, now this goes back to the, the, the last part goes back to the, um. Sections of the granite that are, where the voids are under and the town's fifteen ton loader moving snow and the issue, so we've already covered that scenario, so. Um, you know, and again, we did notice that they're trying to even up the, the differences in thicknesses. I, I really, other than the obligations and who's responsible for the granite not meeting the specs. That's up to you guys to figure that out. Uh, I do have one more question. In the original plans, I re- I seem to recall that the. Sidewalk across the street from the Catholic church in front of the cemetery would have very large radius curving because. Everybody parks there for church on the sidewalk. Um, we recommended eliminating the sidewalk and making it parking area. But, um, the powers that be at the time or whatever, just didn't wanna. Lose the continuity of the sidewalk walking this, around the one block in Kent, um. The, the granite curving that was placed yesterday, and I haven't seen what they placed today, has that quarter inch accepted grind on it. I'm wondering if that's gonna remain that way or if that's going to be ground to a more friendly curb for the parking.
So Mike, I don't know, um, when it was exactly, but back when that was suggested, we looked into. Doing a mountable curb, um, with like a, a chamfered face, but the.
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, the state basically said, and you know, no uncertain terms are we promoting parking. Um, on top of our sidewalk or, you know, the sidewalk, um, along, along the right of way, basically.
Okay, I am, I don't recall hearing what the state had to say about it, I remember talking about it. I thought it was, I thought it was basically a done deal. And I think if, if our committee had known that the state was totally against that, I think we would have pushed more for the. Removal of the sidewalk and, and installation of just parking there, because people are going to park there. And there, you're not gonna stop them because they've been doing it, I've been in. I, I grew up going to that church and they've been parking there since the sixties that I know of, so they're not gonna stop parking on the sidewalk.
Right, and I don't think anybody from the state's gonna come out and necessarily say anything about that, but they weren't, um, you know. Keen to the idea of, you know, that they're showing it to be allowed because if someone gets in an accident. Um, you know, it falls back potentially on them. And I, I know we did discuss it, I think more than once at the, uh, different, just, you know, streetscape meetings, so. I'd have to go back and look when those possibly were, but, uh. You know, people, people can definitely kinda use the aprons into the cemetery and get up on. To the curb and or the sidewalk and not try to get on top of the, you know, the five inch curb. Um, and that's, I guess, on them or, or whoever, if anyone wants to enforce that not happening, but. I wouldn't suggest trying to go straight at that curb.
Yeah, and I do remember that, um, coming up in discussion that in the last. I think two and a half years, I don't think it was before I was here, um. But again, it goes back to, you know, it's sort of similar to, um. When. We established the no parking zones on either sides of the crosswalk and people came to me and said, well, you're taking these parking spaces away. But that's because that was the routine and the custom, but it's never been legal to park within twenty five feet of a crosswalk. So unfortunately, the DOT is going to maintain, you know, unfortunately for us and local custom and routine. DOT is maintaining that there. Were, they're not going to shift, did you, no? Oh, that's weird. You wanna bring the iPad in? Sorry, Mike is in the other room and he, his audio just went out, um. But the DOT, you know, they're not gonna, um. They're not gonna waiver from their standard, unfortunately. Some reason. Spox two. Spox two. You can just tap out there now, should be fine.
Okay, thanks.
He's back.
Sorry folks.
Okay.
I'm totally computer ill.
Sorry about that. He hunted onto a Bluetooth speaker in the building.
So I missed it for being G said.
Yeah, I was just really, um, sort of remarking about the DOT has their standard and. Our custom and our routine locally unfortunately is, um, doesn't match up with what their standard is that. They, that's their standard and I, I met with, um, I met. The primary inspector from the DOT the other day and he was like, these are the, this is the standard and this is the standard and. That's what we do here at the DOT.
Well, I understand, but some of the, some of those concerns aren't meeting those standards.
I was talking about the, um, the Catholic, the, um. Curb along the opposite.
Parking on the sidewalk, yeah, um, I, as I was saying, I. The last I knew or our committee knew was that the, the curving was going to accept that. I didn't know that the state said no to it. We had recommended turning it to parking and had we known, we would have pushed that issue further. That's all, because people aren't gonna stop parking on it and you're gonna get a lot of flat tires. That's it.
Ready. Thanks for spending all this time, Mike, appreciate it.
Jean, I'd like to, to say that, you know, I'm, I'm pretty much a total novice in terms of. Dealing with concrete or granite curbing and stuff like that, um. My concern is, you know, I, I learned a lot when Mike and Jack and, uh. Um, Justin took me out and, and looked at different things and there were a lot of. A lot of things that I thought just, you know, there were small details, but they add up. Uh, joints that didn't match up in the curbing, um, along Bridge Street where the concrete started been poured. Um, things like that and it's like, um. Mike Doherty said to, to today that the gap should not be occurring under, you know, that the compaction should have been better. Um, and so. Um, and so. You know, I'm, you know, we're paying for inspectors to be there to make sure that the items are done. To the best ability of, of the people and uh. You know, that, that the small details are, are adhered to. Um, and. So I really appreciate. The streetscape committee sticking with the project. And, and making noise about what they have not found to be done to. You know, good standards and because it's sort of. I think we're very lucky that we have people who are knowledgeable enough to, to point out things and hopefully um. You know, the inspectors and stuff will realize that um. You know, we, we want, as a town, we want them to say, hey, wait a sec. There are gaps under here. Make the compaction complete all the way under all the curbing, things like that. So. Um, I think um, Kent's very lucky to have had a very. Active and very knowledgeable streetscape, escape committee overseeing the process. Um, I just, I'm concerned that, you know, maybe we, from some of the comments or the inspector wasn't aware that. They weren't just demolishing it, but they weren't aware that they had started placing curbing. You know, are we getting what we're paying for through the inspection process? Um, that's, that's my concern, but uh, I, I think um, we're very lucky to have a very active committee. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Uh, can I speak?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry.
Uh, so this is Mike Doherty. Um, so I just wanna uh, you know, comment a little bit about the inspection out there. Uh, this is one person covering this job. Um, they have to jump back and forth to different areas, so. They're not gonna be able to see every, you know, square inch. Um, SLR is dedicated to. Providing quality service. Um, we do not take that lightly. Is, you know, something gonna get by our inspectors, uh, myself including? Uh, yes. And I think uh, anybody on a construction site would know that, you know, it's almost impossible to catch everything. Uh, our inspectors are giving direction to the uh contractor and subcontractors. Uh, daily, uh, all, you know, all the time. Um, so. I hear what you're saying and I, again, don't take it lightly if something is missed, uh, but we are not. Um, in the business of, of doing shoddy work or um. Being friendly to the contractor to the point where the client is uh getting less than what they paid for. So I understand the concerns. Uh, whenever I hear them in these meetings, they are. Directly given to anybody who's on site representing our firm. Um, but. I do wanna say we, we were on site. Uh, early on, I know people, you know, the paper including quoted saying, you know, we weren't there for weeks or something. Um, which wasn't really the case. Um, but, you know, we do take it seriously. We are not um gaining anything by letting the contractor off. Uh, so that is not in our best interests, not in your best interest, which are in the end, um, we're working for. And so. I will say, yes, things get missed, but we try to limit that to the best of our abilities and have a very good track record. Uh, in terms of construction oversight.
Thanks, everybody.
Uh, Mike, I think that, you know, you're um redoing the curve, the corner curves and stuff is. Evidence of that. You know, wanting to do everything right, so. But I, I just, you know, I, uh, I also think that sometimes. Um, the, the uh, noise from the concerned citizens um. Help keep you guys on your toes.
I don't disagree. I have no problem with the noise.
I say a few things. Um, I, I, I think this has been great. Uh, Mike Gobble, thanks to you and your group and Mike Doherty, thanks to you and you and your group. Uh, this is uh. Again, this is, this is what I was hoping for tonight uh, at this meeting. Um, I've got a couple of observations and then just a general question for Mike Doherty, actually. Um, so um, the regular board of selectmen meeting on June sixteenth at six thirty um, in the minutes. And at the fifty minute mark in the video, um, we did talk about the streetscape update. Uh, Gene updated us. That the curbing materials were proving difficult to source. Uh, that Mather had located the supplier, but there was additional sixty-seven thousand dollars. And that, um, that Gene was going to email Mather that night to confirm the start date and time, which. Many people were all over me about what was gonna start. I had a few questions about that. Uh, the only thing we voted for at that meeting regarding the streetscape was the streetscape clerk of the works job. So we worked on the clerk of the works job description. We talked about what the rate would be. Um, I quickly did uh, some, some brief math. Came up with the, you know, twenty-four thousand dollars, asked if that was in the, uh, the funding and it was. Uh, and we went off on our way, but that was what we talked about um, June sixteenth. So we didn't get into the weeds. At all, uh, as to uh, the type of, well, type of granite, granite, uh, and what that was going to look like from North Carolina granite. Um, and I wanna go back to this question. At that meeting, uh, Gene mentioned that, uh, that Mike Doherty was working on another project in Waterbury. A smaller, a smaller project, uh, but using the same granite from that same company. I'd like to go back to that in a second. Uh, the other meeting, uh, that where we talked about uh, anything with the streetscape was the special board of selectmen meeting on July thirteenth. Uh, at the one hour and seventeen minute mark, um, you know, Gene talked about how we couldn't find a clerk of the work. Uh, a job, uh, we couldn't find someone to do that. We had the job, uh, but, um, but then we decided to uh, extend the contract with SLR. Uh, and to use their services for construction engineering and inspecting inspection services. Which included documentation, daily reports, interpretation of plans, participation in meetings. Um, assistance with change orders and such. So um, and we made, uh, we made a motion and passed that. So just in terms of what we as a board have talked about, that's what we've talked about. That's what we've talked about regarding this streetscape project this summer. Uh, but going back to, uh, to Mike Doherty, uh, uh, so. I, I don't know if you could actually talk about another or would want to talk about another project, but um. But NC granite had, I mean, this type of granite has, is being used elsewhere. Uh, is there, is there an issue uh, at all uh, with um, with, with the type of, of, of granite curbing used elsewhere or um?
Uh, I'm not, uh, issue, I mean, is it, is it what we're used to getting uh, on projects in New England? Not, not necessarily. It's been used. Uh, I've seen it at least a few times in the past decade on projects. Um, it's not as typical, although nowadays it seems to be the only. Uh, supplier on projects that I've seen recently. Why that is, I, I don't know. Um, but I do, we do have a smaller project in Waterbury that is parking lot that. Again, wouldn't get anybody to bid, uh, and no product to be given to the project and except for this, this stone. I think like I, I believe I said in the last meeting, the stone itself meets. The strength, the compression, the absorption. Uh, there's a number of ASTM testing that they have to meet. Um, in terms of durability and this stone does meet and exceed those uh, requirements. It doesn't, you know, it's, it is a different stone than our New England stone, different color. It just has a different look to it and at, at times. But it is used, uh, Mather Corporation used it in Salisbury, I think maybe three years ago, they said. In an installation project in the center of Salisbury. Okay. So it, it gets used. It's, it's just, uh, I would say maybe not as common, but it seems to be becoming more common. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Mike, uh, a follow-up question for that. Um. I, I, you know, over the years and your experience, you, you get granite curbing from different suppliers. Um, and you go through it, is there sort of a? Sort of a uh. General percentage that you could say, well, we, we might reject two percent or five percent? But with this different granite curbing from North Carolina, from this supplier. That that percentage is higher?
Um, it's a good question. I guess I, uh, I can try to use what we've discarded here. And try to get a percentage of that. Um. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. I mean, we typically, if someone was gonna ask us and in terms of bidding a job, I would typically say, yeah, they're ten to fifteen percent. Um, extra quantity to, for cuts and, and not even, not necessarily rejecting, but just for cuts and, and making things fit together. Um. But yeah, I don't know. I couldn't say that NC granite has more discarded over others.
Okay, just curious.
And I, I have a, a very general question. I don't know if, if anyone can even answer this. Um, much has been said of the extra sixty-seven thousand dollars. And I think, Gene, you said the funding, that funding was authorized in the original resolution, so that was, you know, we were able to do that. Uh, go above and beyond. Um, how much was the, how much is the granite curbing? So I mean, what, what kind of percentage has this gone up? What was the original cost? I have no idea.
I don't know that off the top of my head, but we, we did have the comparison that Mather provided.
Cause if it's, I mean, I'm just throwing out a crazy number. I don't know anything, but if it's, if it's, let's say it's a half a million dollars. Uh, you know, so uh, I'm just doing a, a percentage. Um, you know, so um, you know, that's, that's a certain percentage, sixty-seven thousand. Uh, but I would love to, I would love to know for just comparative purposes, just for um. Um, just to give it some context, you know, so, so it went up a little bit, but okay, how much exactly relative to the project? So um. And then I just. Yeah. And then just one last thing to say, um, you know, I was just interested in, in the streetscape committee. Uh, I actually um, uh, wanted uh, the charge. Uh, of the committee because I, uh, you know, I was looking at notes uh, from the streetscape committee, uh, noticing that uh, you had been meeting. Quite a bit in, uh, you know, uh, January, February, uh, March tenth, uh, and then there was a, uh, you know, a gap until, until August twelfth. Uh, and um, then of course the twenty-sixth, the other, just the other day. Uh, but um, I just wanna say this, uh, this is the charges as I, as I read it. Um, oversee the building process of the streetscape project and make recommendations to the board of selectmen on how to implement the plan. Within the budget as proposed by the town of Kent. Um, I don't know when this charge started. I actually don't know how, how, I, I, it's been different iterations of your, of your committee, uh, Mike, I know. But um, I do wanna say, um, thank you uh, for, for keeping an eye on this and um. Uh, you know, thanks to your group and um, and again, I'm gonna also say that I, 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 I think this has been very positive. Uh, we need to go in the right direction to make sure this is done in the timely manner and done properly. And um, I wanna thank everyone tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Glad we're, we had this conversation. I think it was. Time to have it and I think we've got a lot of things out on the table that needed to get out on the table. So are we ready to move on?
Yes.
I'm, I'm finished, so.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
I'm going to sign off. This, this computer keeps going to somebody's Bluetooth speaker, so I'm gonna just sign off. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, then next is six point two, accept and approve the park and rec- recommendation for the after school director. So that is in your folder, which I just lost track for a moment. Um. I will make a motion so that we can get into discussion. Motion to approve the recommendation from the Park and Rec Commission to rehire Tom Ford. As the director of the after school program with a hire date of eight twenty-nine twenty-two at an hourly rate of nineteen dollars an hour. And at an average of twenty hours per week.
Second.
Thank you. Jared, are you on the call still? I see John Grant on there as well.
I am.
Sure, so just fill in any gaps. Um, I imagine you're happy with um, Tom. Perfect. Thanks. He came in last year. Um, do you recall when he came in? May?
He, he came in, yeah, probably without a month and a half left of the program, so probably the beginning of May.
Okay.
Yeah, very happy with the work he did. He then was a counselor, uh, at camp all summer and uh, several times kinda stepped into the camp director role. Um, you know, when uh, when Chris was unavailable. And uh, yeah, I've been nothing but happy with his work. Um. You know, he's, he's been uh, he's been A plus and he's formed a lot of great relationships with the kids, which is, you know, obviously s- so important. So, yep, wholeheartedly recommend, uh, recommend it.
Okay. And I see John Grant is on the call. I didn't know if you wanted to jump in from the um. Commission perspective.
I don't get out much unfortunately because of my injury, but uh, yeah, it's been very good. Everybody's been very positive, even the parents, and that's what we're about is.
That's great.
Yep, amen.
So, um, we'll move to vote. All those in favor.
Hi, hi.
Thank you. Moving on to number seven, old business discussion regarding town meeting for the school resource officer. Um, so Barbara and I had a conference call with town council. For clarification on the referendum question, um, after the board of finance, um, didn't. Um, move to um, basically activate that funding that the board of ed had requested. Under statute, um, freeing up a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for um, to fund part of this uh, position. And. Um, it was a good conversation with attorney Tabella. Um, and. Basically, and I think it's all outlined in the email that was sent out. Um, the issue of whether or not a school resource officer is a suitable expenditure is an operational decision and is not. And is an affair or situation to be considered by the board of selectmen. Um, it is not, it would not be a referendum question. And I'm reading right from their, the email that Barbara sent out. The board of finance at the July twentieth meeting did not make a recommendation. Of an appropriation suitable to be taken to a town meeting or referendum for consideration of the electors and citizens. The board of ad and the board of selectmen have already determined this is an expenditure that is worthy of funding pursuant. To Connecticut general statute seven dash three forty-eight, the board of finance has two options, which are. Either um, for the board of finance to convene and make a motion to recommend the expenditure to the taxpayers and sub- subsequently. The approval of said appropriation would be brought to the electors and citizens for consideration in the form of a referendum. And um, the other is that the board of finance may call a public hearing at which interested parties and citizens shall have the opportunity to be heard. So that the board may obtain information to assist in making its recommendation. Um, or, or not recommendation, or not recommending. So the board of finance has set a meeting for um, September fourteenth. At six o'clock where um, they will be discussing these two options and uh, we will. Wait to hear from that meeting and move forward from there. So that's really the um, the update. I don't have anything for seven point two BOE request for school resource officer. I think this is all wrapped into the same thing. I'm just checking to see if Scott. Um, Trebaco is on the call. I don't think he is. So we'll continue to move along. Um, COVID nineteen pandemic update. Um, again, still so many home, so much home testing that we're not seeing numbers. Um, official numbers from Torrentonary Health Department, so, which we know is, has been going on for a few months now. So which we know is has been going on for a few months now. Um. We do continue continue to see small outbreaks here and there, largely around big gatherings. I expect that we will. See another uptick in a week and a half or two um. Post school opening, which we've been seeing for the last two years. Um in a, you know, in that cycle. Um CDC is also forecasting another wave later this fall into the winter. Um we are getting low on our second shipment of tests. I want to say I maybe have fifteen home kits left. We started with a hundred and eighty. Probably a month ago. So we'll we'll see if we can source a vendor to to get another um to place another order. So that's that's um. That's all for seven point three. The two um. Uh the, yes, um. Lynn, I can email that out, uh forward you that email. The two. Job descriptions, Emergency Management Director, Deputy Emergency Management Director went to Demis. They got back to me. Um they have a couple of suggestions, so I need to incorporate those suggestions and then we'll get them out to you all. On the E V charging station, I'm still waiting for to hear back from Eversource on um. Funding and process of how we go about replacing the one that's out here getting. With using some funding because we don't want to, um you know, it's not in the budget to replace that. So we wait for um Eversource to get back. The flag policy did not make it into the folder. I will send it out hopefully. Tomorrow or Tuesday, I just have not been able to get it wrapped up. Um the Main Street traffic and noise follow up, there really is, there's no update. Again, this is a long term D O T. Waiting on the D O T to to do what they do.
So you haven't heard from them at all?
Nope. Uh North Kent Road and River Road Weekend closures. We had one uh D P W worker there last Sunday at North Kent. Two, which is the side of the river. And due to the sort of crummy weather for the weekend, we're not planning to have any personnel. Placed at any of the um. The roads that we had in the past, you know, few weekends. Supposed to be rainy over the weekend. Um Policy and Procedure Manual, I've been talking with the, there's employment specialists, they're basically employment attorneys. Uh with Kerma. And I think we're gonna try to really prioritize which policies need to be. A lot of them need to be rewritten. Um complete overhaul on a lot of them in the discussions that I'm having so far. We don't have a work plan, but um. Might be able to get one in the next couple of weeks. The Community Resilience Building Workshop Summary Finding Report, those edits came back and I will send that out. Um and it had, again, those minor edits of a. Boat, um there was a park that doesn't exist and there was boat ramp that was never built, um and a couple of typos. And um I'll get that back out. No update on the rooster noise complaint that has um. Quieted down, not to be punny. Um under the salary review, I sent that cog salary. Um the twenty twenty one cog salary um big spreadsheet. And it's, you know, it's a little, it's a lot to consume because there's, it's just tough to. Put that all together in one place. So we'll, you know, maybe next meeting, we can dig into that salary survey and start to talk about that.
Yeah, I'm about halfway through that actually, so I've been I've been been doing that and then Streetscape took most of my time, so uh I could talk about that the next meeting.
Jean, on that survey. So cog sends it out to each town.
Uh cog sends out a big um ask annually and they ask, usually it's the the fiscal folks. Because they're the ones who have the most detail to fill out the information that they're asking for and then they collate it all and publish it. Um just a quick update for Streetscape. They are continuing on that um. I guess east side, the the I G A side of the um of North Main Street. They'll be done pouring um to Webster Bank by midweek next week and then um we'll begin, we'll pick up on Bridge Street. And start pouring over there after that, so probably late next week. Um as I mentioned before, D O T inspectors are onsite almost every day. Um demo at the Fife is tentatively start to um set to start on September twelfth and. Mather is really trying to leverage the days that businesses are either closed or opening late. The Fife opens in the afternoon a couple of days. They're closed on Tuesdays, so. Starting Monday is gonna give them that whole day on Tuesday to get a lot of work done when there's no um no customers there. Alyssa has already met with the foreman once, but he'll he'll check in with her next week to talk about. Um more detail of how they're they're going to plan to not um disrupt her front entrance as much as possible. Um.
I have uh uh two quick comments. Um the uh so the sidewalk by Morningstar there, uh that's going to be ripped up and redone.
Yep.
Okay, um and probably.
And on the other side too.
Other side, yeah. So we should probably let Kent School and 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 Kent Center School know about that when students try to walk around there. And then just uh something that some people have said to me uh driving on on Bridge Streets. Um you know, I mean. The construction workers are doing the best they can with uh with with traffic and all of that, but um. But things, things have, there things have come close to an accident here or there between cars. Uh I've been told by a couple of people, actually. So um I don't know if, you know, I I don't know if Officer Andrew could help a little bit with that, uh but as the Streetscape. Uh project gets closer to that um to that light and that monument in the center of town, uh it's it's. It's gonna be problematic with cars. Uh it's becoming so already, so uh I can see that. Uh and people tell me, so um.
Yeah, and so i- it's, yes. The, you know, we all have our, we all have responsibility there. There's, I think right now there's four flaggers, which is a lot. And they recognize that there's, you know, it's a very condensed, crunched area with the monument and the, you know, the. Curious sort of intersection that's there. Um. But we have to make sure and and um Mather and Mike Doherty um did remark to me today that. They're asking me to send out a reminder to everybody to pay attention to where you're driving. There there, like you said, there've been a couple of situations. And. What has been observed is that people are looking down in their laps. And they all, and they're driving right through the flaggers stop signs. You know, they're waving the stop signs, they're waving their arms and people are driving right through. Because they're not paying attention. We've had a couple of people just lift the the caution tape. That is the work zone, lift it and just walk right through wet cement, wet concrete.
Yep.
A few times, so um we. We need to make sure that we're all paying attention to the changes of, you know, the flow of things as we work through the. The construction.
And then there, and consequently, there's been, there's been much more traffic on Elizabeth and Lane Street. Um so uh so a lot of cars trying to get around that. And not not trying to go on Bridge Streets, so um.
Yeah.
So yeah, so just to be aware of it.
Yep. Um tomorrow, they're focusing on buttoning up the work areas for the long, busy weekend, so you may not see concrete being poured. Or granite being set, but they're really looking to where they can clear out the the safety barrels, move. You know, the cones out of the way where, you know, where it's safe to do so, but obviously leaving everything, leaving things in place where they need to for safety. Cause that's the primary. Um Mather has obtained and placed, I think they had two out. Around one o'clock, but they're looking to place all six um businesses open signs. Um and those will continue to move with the construction so that people are are aware that all of our businesses are open. And to, you know, to go to our businesses and continue to patronizing them. Um we're also working with the Chamber on some signage that will be co-located at the Four Gateway Signs at the Garden Club. Um our four, you know, traditional Welcome to Kent signs will have a. Um probably underneath and in the front, so it's not including them, something like a, you know, please pardon our appearance while we make our. Our village more beautiful, um you know, but keep shopping kind of thing. So we're working on that with the Chamber.
And that uh that carnival on Falcon Field on Saturday, I'll be there the whole, you know, be there the whole day, actually, uh be making some hot dogs. Uh but um I don't know if we can get maybe a a pedestrian pylon out there. I mean, there could be a hundred people on that field. Um. You know, so with with.
Yeah, let me check with Rick.
Yeah, with uh you know.
I know, oh, you know what?
You know.
Um. I think we're waiting on the encroachment permits.
Okay.
But let me, let me check with him to see what we can do.
Just something to look into, yeah. If uh if that's possible, then great.
Yeah.
But there will be more people on Falcon Field on Saturday.
Right.
Depending on the weather.
Okay. Um seven point one five, the Swift House ADA Checklist. Um Joyce and I are meeting with John Worthington next Tuesday. And um basically, the checklist prioritizes the flow, so um. The first section of the checklist is access to the building. That's. For the ADA, that's the most important thing, so that would be the highest priority. Next. You know, each, as each section flows, it, that's the the top to bottom sort of linear sequential priorities, so. We'll sit with John next week and talk to him about, you know. Should we do, should we bring to you all doing the entire building, doing, doing it in phases? Often that's how these projects get done. But it would all be um really looking towards the next budget season to figure out um. The costs of of the of compliance and then, you know, the sort of parallel track, the Swift House Task Forces. Flowing through that um survey for what the public wants um the building used for.
Yeah, the next, the next, the next meeting of that Swift uh House is going to be, I think, I think it's uh October. Uh and um and we're going to focus on that survey specifically, so um.
Um last or second to last is the Town Hall Meeting Room Video Conference System. They made huge, huge progress this week. Um the backboard for the main TV or monitor is up, all of the components are. Installed and he's been through testing on, you know, making sure everything is, you know, working and connected. Um the speakers are up, the. Um mount for the other television that's on the side is up. So huge progress, they're he's, they're basically waiting for the TVs. Um. I don't know if, he he said he might be going in the next couple of days to go purchase them. Um. So Joyce, you're thinking um we'll be up and running, hopefully, because there's training and we need to just go through punch list. And any other, you know, last minute things. Um but hopefully we'll be up and running beginning of October. That's the. The target.
Good news.
And um. The last item uh is another public comment. I'm gonna do a quick realm of the room. Not seen any hands up. So.
Nope, we've got Lynn.
Got one. Hi Lynn, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to ask you, it said the rooster thing, calm down, but I. I I may have missed because I haven't been able to be on every, the beginning of every single meeting um that you've had. But did you guys consider that to be a complaint that needed to be through the farm ordinance? Uh the right to farm ordinance, because I never really got an answer to that. That I had asked Jean that question and I never really got an answer.
So I did talk to Town Council and I I did speak to the folks who authored the ordinance. And that is the spirit that it, it's not just a farming operation, that it is for somebody who wants to have chickens. Or have um. A couple of goats, um so it doesn't have to be sort of for commerce. So it is for anyone um wanting to have a small, you know, have. Farming, um they, I think it's called referred to as farming operations, but farming operations is, can mean three or four chickens. And it can mean more, but obviously planning and zoning would get involved if it was, you know, a bigger operation.
Right, but you guys never really addressed it in that way, did you? Did you act, because the, the ordinance gives very specific things of what the Board of Fin. Uh Board of Selectmen supposed to do, but you never really did anything, did you?
We've, I was following up with the homeowners and I spoke with one homeowner and it settled down. And everybody seemed to be getting along, so I wasn't gonna turn it into something that it wasn't turning into. It sort of had a a big splash and then things settled down.
But you, the the ordinance, because it is gonna come up again. The ord, I think you guys might, it's a little bit closer because you could just have easily of by following the ordinance, you could say, this is. This is a nuisance complaint that the the right to farm ordinance says. You know, everyone's allowed to have farming operations, so complaint is not valid. That's all the, it would have taken.
Right, and in hindsight, I guess, yeah, we could have done that in the meeting, in that initial meeting. I was not. I didn't have the farm, right to farm ordinance in front of me, so I wasn't really ready to to. Discuss it at that meeting that it came up.
But you had multiple meetings on it, so um I just hope that you guys are aware of what your role is. Because there's a very specific goal for the selectmen in that ordinance. Cause it's, it's gonna happen again. So you guys, I hope we'll read through it and make sure that you, the next time you take the action. Cause you basically have to decide whether or not it's, it's covered under the right to farm ordinance or not. And if it's not. If it is a a valid thing, you have to investigate and you have to make a decision on what you're, you're gonna do it. So. Thanks, I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Sure.
Can we look at that the next meeting? Can we um?
Yeah, I was just, I made a note to send it out to you guys.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's talk about that the next meeting.
Yep. Alrighty. We are at five forty seven. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's a dead heat. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
See ya.